Buenos en Hafa Day. The Committee on Health, Land, Justice and Culture is calling this public hearing to order. It is now 1:00 p.m. on Thursday, December 1st, 2022. In compliance with open government law, notices of today's public hearing were provided via email to senators, stakeholders and the local media on November 23rd for the five-day notice and November 29th for the 48-hour notice. I'd like to acknowledge my colleagues that have joined me here today, Senator Telo Titeigui, Senator Pito Terlahi and Senator Chris Duñez. Sis Massey. First of all, welcome everyone to the confirmation hearing for Attorney John Terlahi. So today we will hear public testimony on the judicial nomination of John C. Terlahi to serve as a judge of the Superior Court of Guam. Rules of conduct are as follows. Individuals testifying shall first be recognized by the chair before speaking and begin by stating your name, position irrelevant for record-keeping purposes. Senators will be given the opportunity at the end of each panel to ask questions. The order of testimony will first be the public and we'll reserve the nominee for last. We do have one person testifying on Zoom. And so just as a reminder, please mute until called upon by the chair. Ensure that no virtual backgrounds are used and that your face is visible at all times. Okay, now to begin our agenda. To hear testimony on the judicial nomination of John C. Terlahi to serve as judge of the Superior Court of Guam. So first of all, welcome Attorney Terlahi. I just want to congratulate you on your nomination to be the Superior Court Judge. And I also want to welcome everyone here who's providing testimony today. Before we hear testimony from the first panel, I would like to read part of the statute that pertains to the nomination, appointment, eligibility and tenure of justices and judges. It's from Title VII, Section 3109. "The Governor of Guam, with the advice and consent of Illes Latour in Guahan, shall appoint a qualified person to any vacancy occurring in either the Supreme Court or Superior Court of Guam and to any newly created position of justice or judge authorized by statute. The Judicial Council and the Guam Bar Association may submit a list of qualified nominees for the Governor's consideration. And each other judge or Superior Court of Guam shall be a United States citizen, a bona fide resident of Guam for at least five years, and shall be an active practice of law on Guam for a period of seven years before said nomination. No justice or judge shall during the term of office engage in the private practice of law. No justice or judge shall during the term of office run for or hold any other office or position of profit under the United States, any state, Guam or any political subdivision of the United States." For the record, written testimony has been received in support of Mr. Terlahi's nomination by the Honorable Chief Justice Philip Carbelito, Attorney General-elect Douglas Moreland, Attorney Cynthia Okube, Attorney Seth Foreman, Attorney Stephen Hattori, Monsignor James Benaventi, Kathy Rivera Castro, Kevin Camacho, Ralph Balajaja. And we are still receiving written testimony at this time. I'd like to now call upon the first panel to provide testimony. And when I call your name, if you can please have a seat at the front table. So if we can wait for the, if you don't mind, you can stay seated. The Honorable Anita Sacola, if she's here. Monsignor James Benaventi, please have a seat at the table. On the panel. Attorney Stephen Hattori, if you can come forward. Romeo Convicar, Monsignor. And then we also have Brett Butler. I believe it's John Morrison, if I'm reading it correctly. Peter J. Santos. Attorney Santos. And my apologies, the clerks of the court, Christina Baird, will be reading for Chief Justice Carbelito. So at this time, I'd like to recognize Christina Baird, who'll be providing testimony on behalf of Chief Justice. You're recognized.
Thank you, Senator. Good afternoon to this legislative body. For the record, my name is Christina Baird. I currently serve as the Administrator of the Courts for the Judiciary of Guam. I will be reading into the record, the written testimony of the Honorable Chief Justice Philip Carbelito. And if permitted, I would like to start to read that testimony now. It's not very long, so I'll be very quick. So the testimony in his words starts as follows. Hafa Day, Senator Perez. "In 2016, following a comprehensive review of caseloads and the several dockets of the Superior Court, the Committee for Determination of an Additional Judge, referred to as the Committee, recommended that the Judicial Council make a determination of the need for an eighth judge to sit in the Superior Court. Appointed by then-Chief Justice Robert J. Torres, the Committee consisted of members of the Guam Bar in both public and private practice, the clerk of the Superior Court, and two members of the local judicial bench. In undertaking its review, the Committee surveyed both the Guam Bar and other members of the bench, and each group articulated support for the appointment of an additional Superior Court Judge. The Judicial Council adopted Resolution JC 16-006 in April of 2016, recommending to the Chief Justice that he certify the need for an additional judicial officer. Then-Governor Eddie Calvo was notified of the certification on May 3rd, 2016. Shortly thereafter, a vacancy was created among the seven sitting judges and efforts to appoint another judicial officer were redirected to fill that immediate need. The Judicial Council confirmed its continuing need for an eighth judge in Resolution Number JC 18-002, which was adopted on January 11th, 2018. Since that confirmation, the Superior Court has seen the departure of two more judicial officers, one to the federal bench and another to retirement. Each of these immediate vacancies has necessarily taken precedent over the appointment of an eighth judge. However, the need for an additional judicial officer has never dissipated. Indeed, the COVID-19 pandemic and the shift to remote and hybrid hearings have only highlighted the need even more. As the judiciary begins to normalize operations, it has become evident that our need for an additional judicial officer remains. Therapeutic courts, which require intensive interaction between the court and the parties, are significant aspects of our criminal justice system. These dockets demand more courtroom time than the regular criminal or civil cases. Additionally, the judiciary continues to work through a backlog of cases created during the most severe restrictions of the COVID-19 pandemic. An eighth Superior Court Judge will allow case assignments and dockets to stabilize so that each judicial officer is able to continue their work to deliver effective and efficient justice to our island community. I would note that the judiciary has been busily preparing for the arrival of an additional judicial officer. As I informed the legislature earlier this year during my State of the Judiciary address, the deployment of remote and virtual participation in proceedings in our courtrooms during the pandemic caused us to realize how acute the need was for an upgrade to our technology toolkit. To that end, the judiciary cut the ribbon on its eighth courtroom last month. The newest courtroom is equipped with upgraded advanced technology and modular equipment so that should social distancing be required again in the future, it will be easily adaptable to that concern. The Judiciary of Guam is ready for the arrival of another Superior Court Judge. And Attorney John C. Terlahi is a competent and capable attorney who will take the role of judicial officer seriously. I, Chief Justice Philip Carbelito, am supportive of his confirmation as the eighth member of the Superior Court Bench. That is the end of his written testimony, and I would note that this testimony was submitted to this committee on November 27th. Thank you for the opportunity to speak, Senators.
Sis Massey, Administrator Baird, for that testimony. So now I'd like to call upon Monsignor James Benaventi for his testimony. You're recognized. And if you could just state your name for record-keeping purposes, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. My name is Monsignor James Benaventi. I'm the pastor and rector of the Cathedral Basilica. And with your permission, I'd like to read a prepared text that I had submitted to your office last week. Okay, thank you. "My name is Monsignor James Benaventi, pastor and rector of the Cathedral Basilica, and I submit this written testimony to testify in favor of the nomination of Attorney John C. Terlahi to be a judge of the Superior Court of Guam. John is eminently qualified to be a judge, and I have known John and his family for many years. And at that time, I have dealt with John in a professional, social and spiritual basis. John's temperament is ideal for a judge. He is conscientious, thoughtful, thorough and intelligent. He is not prone to rash tendencies, both professionally as an attorney and on a social basis. John is smart and intelligent and works diligently and productively. When working on a project or a case, he discusses all aspects of the case, both the pros and the cons. He is not afraid to make a decision, and he does so with great competence and confidence. Spiritually, John has deep-seated beliefs that will make him a good judge, to distinguish between right and wrong, and most importantly, to be obedient to the law, to apply and to interpret it correctly. John is a just person, and because of it, he will apply and make just rulings in accordance with the law. For these reasons and for many more that I have not mentioned, it is with great pleasure and honor to testify in support of the confirmation of Attorney John C. Terlahi as a judge of the Superior Court of Guam. Thank you."
Sis Massey, Monsignor, for your testimony. Now I'd like to recognize Attorney Stephen Hattori.
Thank you, Madam Chairperson, and good afternoon, John. I've been a member of the Guam Bar since 1995. I have over 27 years' experience as a lawyer. I've also been at the Public Defender Service Corporation since 1998, over 24 years. Most of my practice involves appearing before the various judges and justices of Guam. And Socrates, over 2,400 years ago, identified four desirable qualities of a judge: to hear courteously, answer wisely, consider soberly, and to decide impartially. Over the course of his career, John's built a broad general practice, doing everything from adoptions to divorce to probate. I cannot imagine an area of law that is completely foreign to him. He will be able to hit the ground running. John is also a public servant. He has been a member of the Private Attorney Panel, a group of criminal defense specialists willing to represent indigent clients charged with crimes. These are not popular cases, and he has zealously defended some charge of pretty heinous crimes. He will be a loss to the Private Attorney Panel. I really should be opposing his nomination for this reason. We really need more attorneys like him in the bar. It is a rare breed of attorneys willing to do what we do for the pay and notoriety that comes with our job. He was and is a public servant, and confirming his nomination will ensure that he continues to be a public servant for the rest of his career. Like I said, he has a broad range of experience, willing to handle difficult cases and causes, all with a demeanor suitable for a judge. Over the years, I've seen many attorneys unable to control emotions and engage in personal attacks. I've lost it myself a few times as well. I've never seen John act untoward or unprofessional towards anyone and treats all with respect, always professional and courteous. And I don't believe that John would be biased for or against our clients because of his experience as a defense attorney. I find that defense attorneys are often more law and order than prosecutors. Defense attorneys, after all, do protect our constitutional rights, and there is no greater law than the Constitution. And as a defense attorney, John has protected that law. John has defended the Constitution, and I have no doubt he will uphold the laws of Guam to the best of his ability. He possesses a neutral and detached disposition that will provide litigants the comfort of knowing that they are being treated fairly and equally. John clearly possesses the statutory qualifications to be a judge, but more importantly, he possesses the characteristics identified by Socrates centuries ago as essential for judges. I support his nomination without hesitation and encourage a swift confirmation. On another note, and I would be remiss now if I didn't speak as the Director of the Public Defender Service Corporation. You know, now that we do have an eighth judge after he's confirmed, we currently have 14 attorneys. Each of our criminal judges have three attorneys assigned to their courtroom. We also have four juvenile judges that we appear before regularly. And so in the future, we may be asking this body for additional support so we could fully cover all of the courtrooms that we have in Guam. And with that, I do urge you to confirm his nomination. And if I could just take a brief moment also to thank Senator Pito Terlahi for his many years of service as a police officer and also as a senator. You will be sorely missed. Sorry for that non-German statement, but thank you for your time.
Sis Massey, Attorney Hattori, for always being here to provide testimony in the legislature. Okay, now on my list, the next one is Father Romeo Convicar. You're recognized.
Honorable Senator Sabina Perez, Acting Chairperson, Committee on Health, Land, Justice and Culture, 36th Guam Legislature, and all members of the 36th Guam Legislature. Hafa Day and a blessed Advent to everyone. My name is Father Romeo Convicar, the Vicar General of the Archdiocese of Agonya. It is my honor to come before you today on behalf of Archbishop Michael Jude Burns and our Catholic Church in support of Attorney John Terlahi. Archbishop Michael Burns is off-island on medical leave. The Archdiocese wholeheartedly supports the appointment of Attorney John Terlahi to serve as a judge on the Superior Court of Guam. This is a man of strong faith, integrity, wisdom and intelligence. Those natural qualities combined with his deep knowledge of the law and tremendous love for our island make him a wonderful person to serve on the judicial bench. The Church has been extremely blessed to have Attorney John Terlahi as our legal counsel for the past 10 years. Gradually, he succeeded his late father and distinguished former Vice Speaker Attorney Edward Terlahi in that role. Even before then, he assisted his dad in guiding our Archdiocese and legal mothers. John's experience and counsel became more valuable to the Archdiocese even before the Church entered unprecedented times in 2019 with our declaration of bankruptcy and the day of reckoning for our sins of sexual abuse against scores of innocent children. As our Guam-based attorney in the bankruptcy process, Attorney John Terlahi has worked exhaustively alongside with our mainland-based attorneys on the Church's efforts to bring a measure of justice, compensation and healing to the hundreds of sexual abuse victims, survivors we have harmed in the past. Amid the fire of intense emotions and anger even directed to the Church from our own people, Attorney John Terlahi has displayed a graceful temperament of humility, compassion and understanding that has helped to ease difficulties for all parties involved. We shall miss him in this capacity as our faithful legal counsel, but rejoice in the greater service that he shall provide to the people of Guam. Sincerely in Christ, signed yours truly, Father Romeo Convicar, Vicar General of the Archdiocese of Agonya, on behalf of Archbishop Michael Jude Burns, Archbishop of Agonya. Thank you.
Thank you so much for that testimony on behalf of Archbishop Burns. I'd like to now recognize on Zoom Catherine Castro. You are recognized, Catherine. Welcome.
Good afternoon, Senator. Thank you for this opportunity. Buenos en Hafa Day, Senator Sabina Perez and Senators of the 36th Guam Legislature. My name is Kathy Rivera Castro, and I'm a resident of the village of Monglong. I submit my letter of support for the appointment nomination of Attorney John C. Terlahi to the position of judge for the Superior Court of Guam. I serve as a Secretariat for the Archdiocese and Liturgical Commission on volunteer basis and had the privilege of meeting Attorney John several years ago. He often provided guidance to us whenever we sought his expertise during our commission meetings. When the COVID pandemic hit our island community, I was appointed by Archbishop Michael Burns as the liaison for the Archdiocese and the government, public and private entities for COVID-related matters. I worked closely with Attorney John for legal guidance on the protocols and guidelines for the Archdiocese. We were in unfamiliar territory, and it was necessary that we were able to continue our liturgical practices while ensuring that we kept our community safe. He worked diligently alongside the Archdiocese and COVID Task Force to ensure that everyone's rights were not being infringed. I also served as the liaison and point of contact for all Catholic parishes, the pastors, the Archdiocese and Catholic schools and their administrators during the bankruptcy legal matter. I worked very closely with Attorney John during this time. It afforded me the opportunity to get to know him, not only on a professional level, but on a personal level as well. My knowledge of the law is very limited. Attorney John assisted me in understanding all the legal aspects of the case, which allowed me to better serve in my capacity. He always took the time to explain things, more often several times, in a vernacular that was so easy to understand. He was very accommodating when meeting with the pastors and the administrators. His patience and commitment to us is certainly commendable. Attorney John always made it a point to ensure that we completely understood things and was readily available. Attorney John comes from a highly respected and well-revered family. His demeanor is that of a person with empathy, fair-mindedness, honesty, compassion and reason. These are all qualities that will serve him and our community well as a judge. It is my hope that you and your fellow colleagues in the 36th Guam Legislature will wholeheartedly support his appointment nomination with his confirmation. Thank you once again for allowing me this opportunity to make my voice heard in support of Attorney John C. Terlahi for the position of Superior Court of Guam Judge. I also take this moment to wish each of you, your staff, your families, a Christmas season filled with much joy, peace and blessing. In 2023, may our Lord bless each of you with good health, prosperity and happiness. Thank you for what you have done for our island community. Sis Massey, Zen Bendishon. Kathy Rivera Castro.
Sis Massey, Ms. Castro, for your testimony. I'd like to now recognize Brett Butler for his testimony.
Thank you, Senator Perez. Hafa Day, my name is Brett Butler, and I am the President of NAMBO Insurance Underwriters. I am here today to provide testimony in favor of John C. Terlahi's appointment to serve as a judge in the Superior Court of Guam. I have known John since 2010, and I have worked closely with him as he has been NAMBO's corporate secretary and treasurer for several years. John also serves as a Director of NAMBO. I believe that John's experience working as an attorney on Guam is excellent preparation for this next step in his career. If John is confirmed to serve as a judge, I am confident that he will strive to support and uphold his duties in the Superior Court of Guam. Thank you for allowing me to share my testimony.
Sis Massey, Mr. Butler, for being here, providing testimony. The next on the list is Attorney Morrison.
Thank you, Madam Chair and Senators. My name is John Morrison. I'm the Deputy Director of the Public Defender Service Corporation, member of the Guam Bar, and I'm going to offer my testimony today as a member of the Guam Bar. I support Attorney Terlahi in this nomination. I would say that anyone that gets to this level to this day needs to have academic credentials and work history worthy of the position. John, of course, does. But I would say there are some other things that separate him that make him a little special. And the first is that he's someone in his career that has actually represented human people in court. And you may think that that's what attorneys are supposed to do, but it's not what every attorney does. There are many attorneys that will represent corporate entities only or draft motions and pleadings, but Attorney Terlahi has been in court representing people. And I believe that has given him a unique opportunity to be empathetic in his applications to the law, to the people that will come before him as a judge if confirmed. Additionally, he has a unique temperament. He's an extremely patient individual. And I'm not suggesting that anybody tests that, but my viewing of him is that he's a very patient person in dealing with some of the clients he's been appointed to over the years. It's easy to get frustrated. You may, for instance, be told on day one in dealing with a client that they want a trial, and on day two that they want a trial, and on the third or fourth meeting that they want a trial, all until the point where you get to their trial and they say, "I do not want to be here. I do not want a trial." And I've seen Attorney Terlahi deal with some of those situations. And his dealing with his clients and dealing with the court was always flawless in his patience, just making sure that his clients understood what they were up against and understood the process. Those are my comments, Senator. Thank you very much for the opportunity to comment on this, and Attorney Terlahi, of course, has my support.
Thank you, Attorney Morrison, for that insight and your testimony. I'd like to recognize Attorney Peter Santos for his testimony.
Good afternoon, Madam Chairperson and Senators. My name is Peter Santos. I'm a staff attorney up at the alternate Public Defender's Office. And I'm here to offer my support for John Terlahi. I don't really know him that long or that well, but the reason why I'm here, you know, like when I first heard who he was, it was actually one of the off-island attorneys when I was up at the AG's office asking me if I know how to contact an attorney named John Terlejay. And I didn't, I said, "I don't, I've never heard of this attorney." So he showed me the documents that he was dealing with, and I said, "Oh, John Terlahi." But even then, I still didn't know who he was, and so I asked around and I did some research. And when I learned who he was and what his pedigree was and his family history and all that, and the ties to the community, I was a little bit intimidated and apprehensive about who this guy is. He's, you know, he's a very well-respected individual, but when I first met him, he was super humble and talked to me like I was, you know, or he came down to my level. At least I had... At least I had propped him up in my mind, but he never once had an air of arrogance or superiority. And so it's just his tremendous sincerity, genuineness and humbleness that left that impression with me. And we've had the opportunity to work on a couple of cases with co-defendants and I've seen how he works and I will attest that what Mr. Morrison has mentioned is all true. And so that's why I wanted to come and speak on John Terlaej's behalf because I believe that he has all those qualities that everybody spoke of, but also he has a tremendous, tremendously high emotional IQ, if you're familiar with that. So I fully support John to be our eighth Superior Court Judge. Thank you.
Thank you so much Attorney Santos. Okay, so I'm going to open up to my colleagues, if they have any questions to this panel. Senator Pedro Terlahi.
Thank you Madam Chair. Before I share my thoughts, I just want to thank everybody. I see a whole lot of Terlahis in here. So thank you very much. So John, I just want to tell you that I do support your nomination and I'll go ahead and say I will support your confirmation. And I want to thank all my families that are here and all the guests that are here this afternoon in testimony of my nephew, John. Thank you very much. Thank you very much Madam Speaker. Or Madam Chairman.
Seduz maasi Senator Terlahi. Senator Cristhianus, do you have any questions for the panel? No questions? Senator Tadequie? Okay, no questions. All right, thank you so much and we'll call the next group up. We have the Honorable Anita Sikola, if she can come to the front, I believe. Edward Cruz. Jesse Katahe, if you're here. It looks like Attorney Peter, is it Perez or Per? Attorney Jaclyn Terlahi. Attorney Mike Phillips. Is there any more seating? Okay, and then, or whoever's reading Attorney Phillips's testimony? Okay, Mike Phillips, great. And let's see, that's who I have so far. Okay, is there anyone else that I missed that would like to come to the table? All right, yeah. So what is your name?
Anthony Perez.
Anthony Perez, okay. All right, okay. All right, thank you. So we would like to start with the Honorable Anita Sikola for her testimony.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Madam Chairperson and members of this august body. Good afternoon, Mr. Terlahi, John. Ladies and gentlemen, Legislature, I thank you for this opportunity to testify today in support of the nomination of John Terlahi to become a judge at the Superior Court of Guam. My name is Anita Sikola. I come from the village of Dedido. I have known John Terlahi professionally for nearly twenty years. I chose John to be my first law clerk when I, when I myself first became a Superior Court Judge in 2006. The court, and especially this rookie judge, could not have been better served by this young law clerk. Mr. Terlahi was conscientious, hardworking and above all, respect, he had respect, respect of others and respect for the rule of law. A year on after John moved on to private practice with his dad, and of course, after reasonable stand-down between the period of a judge who had a law clerk, we have to at least have a year to two years separation, John frequently appeared before my court representing a myriad of clients, many of whom were indigent, poor, our people, until I retired from the bench last year, 2021. In my humble view, I truly believe John has all the makings of a good judge, based on what I know of him and my knowledge of his work. As Socrates so aptly put, there are four qualities that belong to a judge: to hear courteously, to answer wisely, to consider soberly and to decide impartially. John possesses all these. He is a good listener and a critical thinker. He is thorough in conducting his work. He is compassionate in his considerations and above all, he is fair. As a young law clerk, John demonstrated his critical reasoning skills when he did legal research on the cases before us. We would discuss the cases thoroughly and would always keep an open mind when weighing the significance and implications of the law. Even then, as a young law clerk, he clearly understood that justice was more than just interpreting the law. It must also show compassion for people. And John has compassion, especially for those in need. He was always so respectful of others, of people around him, to the judges, of course, but also to his legal colleagues and judicial colleagues and to the various parties before the court. Bula respetunya. For as long as I've worked with him, I've only known him to speak gently, softly and kindly to others around him. And no cat na me fan na gwin maulik, see John, as the naan and ta'atanya. He had good parents. He was brought up well. Yes, indeed, it shows that he had a great upbringing, obvious. As a lawyer, John practiced before my court for nearly sixteen years and I was not very, I did not give him any breaks at all. He also practiced for sixteen years in other courtrooms and before other judges as well. He did criminal and civil trials that often had complex motions attached to each of the cases. Judges are often asked to weigh through the complex legal documents and be able to analyze them and to be able to apply the rules of the court and the rules of law in considering and passing judgment. I believe that John Terlahi has the legal knowledge and experience and necessary skills to be able to do so. I see John as having a strong work ethic, putting his duties and his responsibilities above all. As a trial attorney, John was always prompt, never leaving his clients or the judges waiting. He always had a good reason, an excuse, and he never turned down a court assignment for those cases that other lawyers quietly complained about. I admire John's willingness to truly help people most in need of such help. It is my belief that John Terlahi would make an excellent judge at the Superior Court of Guam. Madam Chairman, I thank you for this opportunity to testify on behalf. Seduz maasi, zen felis pasqua.
Seduz maasi Honorable Sikola. I'd like to now recognize Public Auditor BJ Cruz to provide his testimony.
Thank you very much Madam Chairman. I'm going to have to revise my testimony after the last speaker because I actually came today. I'm Benjamin Cruz and I'm here in support of John's, Terlahi's confirmation. But I wanted to point out something in John's resume that other judges didn't have. But then I saw Judge Sikola and I realized that that one thing that I was going to highlight was wrong. There was a judge before John's nomination who had experience in education and that was Judge Sikola. And that background served her well. And I came here today in support of John's nomination to point out the fact that I met him when I was on the family court bench because he was the Assistant Principal for Attendance and Discipline at George Washington High School. And I always knew that when my orders went there, that they were going to be complied with and adhered to. And I also knew that it would be complied to compassionately and with care for the students. And I didn't have very many students from there, but I also during that period was living with a teacher that was teaching at George Washington who spoke very highly of the Assistant Principal for Attendance and Discipline and the fact that he had this compassion and care for the students. And I believe that little part of his resume that's at the very, very bottom should be of importance to all of you because I think it's important that unlike Judge Sikola and other judges were like me, we went straight from college into law school and then into practice. These two went and hadn't had a very successful career outside in education, dealing with, as one person on the last panel said, dealing with real people. And I think John's experience as an Assistant Principal will give him that kind of insight that Judge Sikola possessed in the years that she was on the bench, understanding how to deal with these young people. And I'm hoping that this legislature will expeditiously move his confirmation forward and vote on this in the next session. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much Attorney Cruz, Public Auditor Cruz. Now I'd like to recognize Edward Cruz for his testimony.
Madam Chair Sabrina Perez, the thirty-six Guam Legislature. My name is Edward T. Cruz. I'm a Country Manager of Mariana Express Lines and a past president of the Rotary Club of Northern Guam. It is an honor to be here today to give my full support in the nomination of Attorney John Terlahi to be the eighth judge of the Superior Court of Guam. I have known Attorney John Terlahi for so many years, a humble and respectful man of good character. As a Retarian, for now at seven years, a past president himself, he is dedicated member to the Rotary Club of Northern Guam. His involvement in the Rotary Club goes over and beyond the model of service above self. He has been so, for so many years, volunteering in time to help in our community, projects around the world, around the island. He has contributed either in labor or donations to the worthy cause or for a goal in uplifting the island community. As a Retarian, we are volunteers who work locally and internationally to provide educational outreach, improve the health and environmental issues, and most of all, work to promote peace to our islands and our communities. The recent recognition in the Rotary Club was that Guam was recipient of $5,000 grant provided PPEs and hand sanitizers, which was distributed around the island to assist in the protection of the people of COVID-19 pandemic. Attorney John Terlahi is a major contributor to the Paul Harris Foundation, which handles this foundation of money for grants with Rotary International. Contributions made in this foundation allows Rotary Clubs around the world to help finance the projects for global polio eradication and to provide clean drinking water and help build wells in much-needed countries around the world. Retarians from Guam are distinguished members in the Paul Harris Foundation with the Rotary International. John entered as a club member, took leadership as a president of the Rotary Club, joined its community, associated with other business professionals in the club, all working for the same cause to serve our island people. Attorney John Terlahi experiences in his legal career, his service as a Retarian and a person of strong faith in God. I can say he is known to be a man of integrity. I also know John as we both live in the same village, Jonia, Senator Pedro. We as parishioners of St. Francis of Assisi Church and is a volunteer in the service of ministry of the church. His family also volunteers in the service of the ministry, John being a team leader for the services around the church. All his attributes in his work ethics, community involvement, association in service related to functions, he communicated with examples of his good character. I believe he is a great asset to the Superior Court of Guam because of his strong moral principles that he will bring into the courtroom. As he said on the day he was appointed by the Governor Lou Long Guerrero, the people of Guam was always a priority. John has served and dedicated his professional career to being there for the people of Guam. Thank you for this opportunity to speak in support of this great man. Seduz maasi.
Seduz maasi Mr. Cruz for your testimony. Next I'd like to call upon Mr. Jesse Katahe for his.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair and members of, Senator, members of the committee. My name is Jesse Katahe, private citizen, retired. Thank you for affording me this opportunity to testify on behalf of Attorney John Terlahi's appointment by Governor Lou Long Guerrero to the position of judge in the Superior Court of Guam. I have known him, having assisted me both with legal issues in my past professional and my present personal situations. Attorney Terlahi has years of courtroom experience representing his clients in areas of probate, corporate land, family law and criminal issues. As I have officially consulted with Attorney Terlahi on several legal issues, I found him to be professional and diligent in all of his efforts. In addition to serving the community in its legal professional capacity, he has also been active in the community being a member of the several church, civic organizations and other organizations. He shares his personal time and serves such as paramyrs for youth institutional settings. In my opinion, Attorney Terlahi has the character, integrity, good temperament, the traits are necessary to perform his job well as a judge in a stressful situation. He would be the one who is composed of not being caught in the moment. A clear mind in the court lends to sound judgments and decisions. Attorney Terlahi has the trial and courtroom experience having argued cases before judges. I'm sure that he has observed the traits and strengths of those who were deep good and fair judges and with their approval of his nomination would give him the opportunity to be a good one himself. Thank you again for giving me this opportunity to testify on Attorney Terlahi's behalf and urge you to approve his nomination to the position of judge for the Superior Court of Guam. Jesse Katahe.
Thank you so much Mr. Katahe for your testimony. The next I'd like to call upon. The next I'd like to call upon Attorney Anthony Perez.
If you can speak into the mic, please. Yeah, thank you. Sorry. Hafay, Madam Chair, Senator Terlaihi, Senator Titegui, and Senator Duennius. My name is Anthony C. Perez, and I submit this testimony to exhibit my unequivocal support for the confirmation of the appointment of Attorney John C. Terlaihi as a judge for the Superior Court of Guam. I praise the wisdom of Governor Leon Guerrero and Lieutenant Governor Tenorio in appointing John, and wholeheartedly believe that John would serve the community with distinction and honor as a judge. I humbly yet strongly encourage the members of the legislature to confirm John's appointment. I've known John for almost my entire life and could certainly vouch for his professionalism, skill, and intelligence, not only as a lawyer, but also the kindness, integrity, and honor of John as a person. Now, John began his legal career as a law clerk in 2001, and I thought it was for presiding Judge La Morena, but Judge Sikola may... Both, I guess. And entered private practice thereafter with his father, the late Eduardo Terlaihi. John and I actually began practicing in private practice around the same time when I moved back to Guam in 2002, and John was transitioning from the law clerk to private practice role. I have extensive knowledge and experience of John's legal career from its inception to the present, and he would often talk through the years about cases, strategies, and advice. John has always been happy to lend an ear and provide advice when inquired, never complaining or saying he was too busy to help. And I doubt I am the only lawyer that John has given advice or helped to throughout the years. John as an attorney was formidable and talented, with a broad range of knowledge and experience in a wide array of legal matters spanning, as all the other lawyers who testified have said, basically naming every category of law, because that really is what John knows: probate, domestic, civil litigation, criminal defense, corporate law, personal injury. And even recently, I had a case with John in a bankruptcy, which no real lawyers, no lawyers deal with that often. These are types of matters which a judge of the Superior Court of Guam would have to address and adjudicate on a daily basis, but John already does that. There will be no learning curve for John from being a private practice lawyer to being a judge, as apart from the wide array of legal matters that he has worked on, John further attends court daily. John has been before the courts of Guam as a practicing lawyer almost as often as our sitting judges. Personally, John is a great guy, despite the stereotypes and cliches normally attributed to lawyers. John is well-liked by his clients, fellow lawyers, judges, and staffs of the judiciaries of Guam. He is not emotional, never angry or upset, and always maintains a kindness and composure despite the stress of the legal profession. He is polite and friendly to all, rare traits when the nature of this profession is so adversarial and competitive. And no offense to the approximate 20 other lawyers in this room, but I would go so far as to say that John may be the most well-liked attorney on Guam by his fellow lawyers. It is Guam's, it is John's personality traits that show he has the legal temperament to be a judge on Guam. Now, as stated, I've known John most of my life, having lived next to John since I was two months old, and being friends with him throughout our lives despite our approximate seven-year age gap. Brother Mike over here is actually my age. We're classmates. I knew, actually knew John before he was a lawyer, when he was a public school teacher and part-time dive instructor, not only for me but all our family. He did it with his brother Tom when they had a dive shop. And what's interesting about John is, even before he was a lawyer, when he was a teacher and dive instructor, once he became a lawyer and had immense success, his personality has not changed. I was actually mildly surprised when John informed me of his interest to be a judge, considering his success as a private attorney. However, I realize that money and wealth are not important to John, but it's his love of Guam and to public service that is important to him. When you combine John's legal skill and experience, his kindness and temperament, and his dedication to Guam public service, there's no better candidate on Guam to serve as a judge for the Superior Court of Guam. I thank the legislature for hearing my testimony and hope for a speedy and positive confirmation of John as a judge. Thank you.
Sidoz Masi, Attorney Perez, for your testimony. Next, I'd like to recognize Attorney Peter Perez.
Good afternoon, Madam Chairperson and honorable members of the committee. My name is Peter Perez, and I've been a lawyer practicing on Guam for nearly 30 years. On behalf of myself and my father, Peter F. Perez, along with, you just heard the testimony of Anthony C. Perez, I write to express our support for the confirmation of the appointment of Attorney John C. Terlaihi to serve as our next judge to the Superior Court of Guam. I've known John personally for over 40 years and professionally for his entire career. As a result, I feel unqualified to attest that Attorney Terlaihi possesses the qualities to be an excellent Superior Court judge. He has the skills and experience necessary. He is a seasoned attorney who has practiced for over 20 years in different areas of law, including civil litigation, criminal defense, business and corporate law, probate, domestic, personal injury, and other areas. And during this extended time, he has represented a diverse array of clients. These include our most vulnerable parties: the indigent, the incompetent, the elderly, the unrepresented youth. And he's demonstrated a record of commitment to representing his clients ethically, effectively, and diligently. His practice is emphasized in court work, including trials, evidentiary hearings, motion arguments, having face-to-face encounters with judges, the court, other lawyers, parties, witnesses, and court staff. Having a judge with this type of practical experience is invaluable to parties, their lawyers, and our community. Johnish has the in-court experience that gives him the practical understanding of how to be an efficient and effective judge. Basically, John has what it takes to be a good judge. He has the character, personality, and temperament that will benefit all of those who appear before him: the ability to apply the law to the facts of a case fairly and impartially, the compassion and sensitivity to understand that his decisions will affect deeply those who appear before him, and the even temperament we call judicial temperament that creates a courteous and respectful court. It is our pleasure to endorse without reservation the confirmation of Attorney Terlaihi as our next Superior Court judge. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Attorney Pete Perez. I'd like to now recognize Attorney Jaclyn Terlaihi.
Madam Chair and honorable senators of the 36 Guam Legislature, my name is Jaclyn Terlaihi. I am the president of the Guam Bar Association, and I'm here today to support the nomination and confirmation, I hope, of John Terlaihi. I'm here in both my professional capacity and in my personal capacity as a friend of John. And, you know, not many instances in our lives do we get the opportunity to speak well of our friends. And it's kind of nerve-wracking because the friend is sitting next to you and gets to listen to everything that you say. But on a professional level, John and I have worked on the most historical case on the island, on opposite ends of the stick, in the archdiocese cases, cases that will be infamous in the history of Guam. And what I can tell you about John is John, despite the fact that we are on opposite ends of the stick, we have worked together fantastically well, professionally, respectfully, and I have never been treated or maltreated by John in any way. And that is what stuck out to me, working with him as an attorney in a contentious case. As the other attorneys have said in the room, they've said amazing things about him, and they're all true. I agree 100%. I can't add any more to what the other attorneys have said, but what I can tell you is that I am heartened by the fact that the attorneys have come out today in full force to support John. Because today also, I come today on behalf of our Board of Governors, which is the governing body of the Guam Bar Association, which basically is the administrative body of all the lawyers licensed on the island, of which were made up of 300 active attorneys. And the Board of Governors supports John's nomination, not just because he's our colleague, not just because he's an officer of our board, but because we all believe that he's not only competent, but that he is a fantastic choice for a trial judge of our Superior Court. On a personal level, I have loved my interaction with John. Why? Because many times we've had to work professionally together on governing issues with our board, and John had no qualms telling me, "Jackie, I can't do it. I promised my nieces that I was going to be with them tonight." Or, "Jackie, I can't be there because I've got to go and help my brother." You know, or, "Jackie, I can't because I already am scheduled to be with my mom or my dad tonight." And, you know, that gave me such a tremendous respect for this man because I saw how important family was to him, how important people are to him. And that is something that really stands out about John, the importance that the person has to him. So I don't say that just because my last name is Terlaihi too, but I see it's the favorite name in the room. We are the majority in the room, I think, today. But really, I am here today simply to say that my friend and my colleague is a wonderful choice for our Superior Court of Guam, and I am asking our Senate to act as quickly as possible and as expeditiously for his confirmation. Thank you for the opportunity to testify.
Sidoz Masi, Attorney Terlaihi. Now I'd like to recognize Attorney Phillips for his testimony.
Thank you, Madam Chair and senators that are here today. I'm very proud to be here to support both the nomination and the confirmation of John Terlaihi to be the next judge of the Superior Court of Guam. You know, I found out about John's nomination probably in a different way than I have as far as I can remember all the other nominations, because you would kind of hear it's coming and people would be talking about it. Some people may be campaigning for it. John never asked me even just to mention his name in a Guam bar survey or to testify here today, nothing. I think the only contact we had is I congratulated him and he said, "Thank you," because that's how John is, and that's why I'm not too surprised. But I would say this, I contacted two attorneys the moment I saw the release, and both of them said the same thing, "No way." And I said, "Yeah." And we were all excited about it. And I've been told this, and I won't name the former senator, but, you know, somebody we're all friends with, she asked me one time in, it was in a communion line at the cathedral, but it was a line for something. She said, "Mike, you talked about judicial temperament, and I still don't really get it." And I said, "Well, to an attorney, it's really, really important." Because can you imagine if he went in to see a doctor and how that doctor was feeling affected the treatment that you got, or your ability to speak with your physician or a physician? And so to an attorney to be able to go into a courtroom and know that no matter what mood the judge may or not be in, that your client is going to get a fair shake, your arguments are going to be heard and appreciated, that is really, really important to attorneys. And like, I think, almost everybody here, I've had experience with John in domestic cases, civil cases, criminal cases. We've shared clients, he's taken over clients. I don't know if I've taken over any of his criminal clients, but we have that experience probate. And throughout all of the cases that we've done, I've always seen John as extremely competent, calm, always has a sense of humor, fair, and he always cares. And that's another trait that, you know, gives you gray hair and takes years off your life, as you as senators know. You can just do your job, or you can do your job and care. And when you care, you know, you pay a price for it. It appears to me, to some, to be easier not to care, and that's just not the ballpark John's in. He's not one to take credit for much. I could repeat everything that the other attorneys have said, and it's because I agree with, especially Tony, when he went down the line, I echo everything that he said, and I won't repeat that. But I will say that one of the things that has always been important to me and others is the survival of Mount Carmel School, and that could not have happened without John Terlaihi. Ed Terlaihi stepped in, and I don't have a title, because they don't have a title for what they did, but Ed was kind of a point man, maybe a savior, and then John took over. And John not only was the point person for us working with the archdiocese, but then he was on the alumni and endowment foundation for many, many years and provided a lot of guidance. And while I appreciate his background in education, I think I've known John for over 35 years, I remember his guidance to me. The one line that he said that I've never forgotten, he always said this, "Mike, you really don't need a principal, you need a vice principal," because vice principals keep the school running. And so I've shared that with so many after he left, and that is, it's true. You've got to know what makes things work. And without repeating anything that has been said, I do want to share that I've been on, I can't really say opposite sides, but I've been maybe on opposite sides of an issue with John, and what has been said about him is absolutely true. If you need an hour, he will tolerate me for an hour. If it's two hours, he'll do it, and he doesn't lose it. I could never do it, I'll be honest. I could never deal with confrontational issues like that where you're dealing with someone that has something really, really, really important. John has a knack for it, and not everybody does, but John can do that. And so that's one of many reasons I believe that he's an outstanding choice. I'm very glad that the governor nominated John. I hope that there's no reservations for any of you supporting his confirmation. And I will say that he's very rooted in faith. He's somebody that is very thorough, and at times, some people may be fooled because of his personality, unless you know him, you think, well, you know, he's such an easygoing guy, he can't also be serious. He can be very, very serious, and he's very, very thorough. And so I look forward to having what Peter Santos and some of the other attorneys here, I'll speak for myself, although I've named some of them, refer to as real attorneys, because there are many, and I don't begrudge them, I'm sure they make more money than most of us, that don't deal with real, live clients every day. And so having to speak with them on the phone or know that if you lose, it affects them personally, that's really, when I grew up, that's the only thing I knew that attorneys did. I had no idea that they did anything else, and so when I wanted to be an attorney, I wanted to be somebody like that. That's somebody like John. John is exactly that, he has that profile, and while he's done so many different cases, it's how he's done them. He's very, very competent, he cares, and yeah, you won't go wrong by supporting John Terlaihi. I don't think it'll take too long before he's on the bench that you hear these same remarks from attorneys that are coming out from cases with him. I think they'll be very satisfied, and I think you'll all be impressed, and I think you'll be very glad that you supported him. No questions, and that's all I have.
Sidoz Masi, Attorney Phillips, for your testimony. So now, is there anyone else that would like to provide testimony that's not been called? Can please come forward? Okay. Are there any questions from my colleagues? Senator Peter Terlaihi, if you have any questions or comments with this panel?
I just want to congratulate my nephew for this nomination, and sooner you'll be confirmed by, you'll be confirmed by this panel up here. Thank you, John, for taking the challenge. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Senator Terlaihi. Senator Duennius, do you have any questions for the panel? Senator Titegui? Okay. All right. So thank you for your testimony. Now we would like to, the moment we've been waiting for is the testimony by the nominee Attorney John Terlaihi, you're recognized whenever you're ready.
Thank you. Buenos Aires, senators. First off, I'd like to thank Senator Perez and the committee, as well as all the senators that attended today, especially your staff, who took the time and the effort in this process to move it process to move it along. I know it's been a very time-restrained process. Also like to state that I'm very humbled and honored by Governor Lillian Guerrero's nomination to this position. And I appreciate her trust and confidence in me to become the judge of the Superior Court of Guam. But I am most honored and appreciative by those who have written and testified today on my behalf. I am also extremely thankful for all those who attended today's hearing, whether in person or via YouTube. I also want to thank my God for allowing such an opportunity to come my way during my lifetime. Today's hearing is an important part of the process, not only for this committee to get to know me, but for the people of Guam as well to know me, as they will be the people who will be served by this nomination. I am from the village of Zonia and the son of Shirley and Edward Turlohi. I was raised with my 10 siblings, many of whom are here today. Thank you all for coming. I am a middle child with five older and five younger siblings. If there was ever a place to learn patience and humility, it is being a middle child of a large family. Growing up, my parents raised us to respect all people, as well as to respect the knowledge that can be obtained by listening to others, especially my uncle. As a child, I attended St. Francis School, Cathedral Grade School, and finished up junior high at St. Anthony's School. I attended Father Duennius Memorial School, but I am a proud graduate of George Washington High School. After high school, I then moved to the University of Guam. While attending undergraduate school, I managed families' apartments, I did yard work, and I was actually a fast food employee at one of the fast food restaurants on Guam. At YOG, I received my Bachelor's of Business Administration with an emphasis in management. I wanted to be a business owner. During my college career, I told myself I never wanted to learn to type or to use the computer. It was all new to me. But now I find myself typing on the computer daily. But instead of business, I decided to go into education. My mother, she was previously an educator at the University of Guam, as well as St. Francis School. So I eventually became a teacher in the public school system. As a teacher, I worked at Antlum Middle School, Delido Middle School, and George Washington High School. I dealt with over 100-plus children a day as a teacher. This occupation will teach anyone humility and patience, especially in the middle schools. It also forces you to think of creative and innovative ideas to help the students' progress in their studies. As one can imagine, there are many challenges in the classroom, especially finding a way for students to enjoy learning. I then became an assistant principal for eight years. I served at JFK High School, Inron High School, and George Washington High School. As an administrator, I oversaw the business office, facilities, attendance, discipline office, and curriculum office of the various schools. These positions had me interact with teachers, as well as with the fellow administrators, downtown office personnel, custodians, and school aides. This also involved the management and evaluation of both employees and teachers. Both as a teacher and as administrator, I was tasked with meeting with students and parents as well. Learning to relay your message to all the parties was very crucial to be successful. These two careers that I had previously were both very fulfilling and enjoyable for me. The interaction with the people and students is very rewarding personally. Seeing the light bulb turn on in a child is the greatest feeling a teacher could ever have. But God must have had other plans for me, because in 1999, I decided to go to law school at Thomas Cooley in Michigan. My father was an attorney in Guam for over five decades. My sister has been an attorney for over 30 years. They both encouraged me to go and attend law school and were instrumental in me completing law school with a degree. In 2001, I came back and worked at the court for one and a half years as a law clerk for many of the Superior Court of Guam judges. Here, I was exposed to many different types of cases and researched many issues for those cases. I also assisted in writing decisions and orders for the courts. In 2002, I opened up a solo practice, sharing office space with my father and sister. And for the next 20 years, I have been a solo practitioner. People ask why solo practice and not the government? Because I figured solo practice will allow me to assist those in most need of help in the many aspects of the law, as opposed to just one aspect of the law. I also sought the clients of my father and the gratitude that they had for him after assisting them. But running a law office is not the easiest thing to do. There are always worries about bills, payrolls, deadlines, et cetera. It could be nerve-wracking at times. During my practice, I have practiced in both the local and federal courts on Guam. Over the 20 years of being an attorney, there have been hundreds of cases that have passed through my office. This practice involved probate cases, criminal cases from murder cases to simple assault. I was on the indigent panel for 15-plus years, serving those who needed the assistance of an attorney and couldn't afford it. I did civil cases, from simple civil cases to complex litigation. I worked with procurement issues, family cases, bankruptcy, juvenile, domestic, and appeals. Types of cases that involved included divorces, guardianships, adoptions, bylaws, articles of incorporation, LLCs, felonies and misdemeanors, and many other aspects of the law. I have also been legal counsel for various corporations and nonprofit entities. I've also practiced in front of therapeutic courts of the Superior Court of Guam, such as the Drug Court, the Veterans Affairs Court, Family Violence Court, and the DUI Court. These courts are very helpful in stopping repeat offenders, as well as being able to see and evaluate the issues people may have. This is very helpful to not only the clients, but to the attorneys and the courts. During my time as an attorney, I had almost daily appearances at the court and interactions with clients. I love that interaction and relationship building. I will miss that the most, as well as the opportunities to assist the people. Judges lose that personal interaction and must look at cases with an unbiased eye without any personal feelings toward the parties. With many clients, they're coming to see an attorney, it is usually not for great news. No one cares ever come to see me saying they won the lottery. Usually, they are burdened with an issue that is most personal or affects them economically. Looking at the issues and explaining the options to them is a very delicate part of the job. Not everyone wants to hear what you may have to say at that time and may not agree with you. I pride myself in moving cases along and not expanding the issues in order for the parties to hopefully settle the matter, or at least not expand the animosity anyone may have. Throughout my career and lifetime, we have always been told to assist in the community, whether it's in the local community or in the religious setting. Over the years, I have participated with the Rotary Club of Northern Guam, the Knights of Columbus, I have held various parish positions, and I've been a Guam Bar Association officer for, I think, 15-plus years. The experiences I mentioned, whether it is working with the children of Guam or adult clients, I feel benefits me and prepare me to handle many of the cases that may be assigned to me. One must be calm and deliberative in making any decisions that may affect any of the parties. Any and all decisions require that you look at the facts and compare them to the rules that are set out to follow. It forces a person to become decisive, yet compassionate to people and their issues. Having a solo practice also forces you to commit to hard work. This is what is expected by your clients and what I can promise to the people if I am confirmed. Judges are also directed by the Code of Judicial Conduct on how to handle cases that may be placed upon them, and I will follow them as provided. This also includes any potential conflicts which may arise while on the bench. In closing, I want to thank this committee and the Senators for attending today, but most especially the people who are here to support me. It is overwhelming and touching. I look forward to any concerns or questions that this committee may have for me today. And I'll be honored to be confirmed to serve the people of Guam as a judge in the Superior Court of Guam. Thank you.
Sutus Masi, Attorney John Turlohi, for your testimony. And I just want to thank you for accepting the nomination, which at this time will be for the Eighth Superior Court Judge, which is a historical thing, and which has been contemplated and envisioned by the judiciary for several years now. Just hearing the testimony, it shows that your experience and expertise gained in private practice for over two decades on Guam has been guided by your professionalism, temperament, character, and commitment to a life of service, and is what our community will rely upon as you apply the laws impartially and fairly, so that each citizen will be treated with dignity, respect, and fairness. The endorsements from the members of the legal community today, as well as a wider audience, is a testament to your readiness to take on this task and to ensure the trust that we hold judges to. I guess there are just a couple of questions that I have. You know, I guess one thing that, when I was looking over a lot of your history, is that what really stood out to me was your call to service, your commitment to service. And if you could just, you know, maybe explain to the listening audience, you know, what is the reason, what drives you? And it seems like it started from the very beginning, you know, from your professional life. Can you maybe provide some insight as to what made you committed to serving the public? Because that's really, that really stands out.
Thank you. As I mentioned earlier, my parents always stressed that we try to help those that need help. And that whether that's joining a committee, whether it's joining a certain group, or whether it's doing it individually and helping a person in one-on-one, or helping with a group. My dad was a solo practitioner. Again, I saw his clients come and go and his empathy to helping them left a mark on me. My mother was instructor at Mercy of Guam, she taught at St. Francis School. She was involved in many organizations with the church, as well as political organizations and so forth. And that took a lot of their time. You had 11 children at home and we were enough, I would think. But they always found the time to go out and help people and they made the time to do it. And I think that upbringing helped all of us tell ourselves to do what we can with the people of Guam. You know, what God has given us, God has blessed us with, share it with the people as much as we can.
Yeah, thank you. The other question I have is, so in practicing law in Guam for 20 years, you are very much, become very familiar with a lot of the community here. And I guess one of the biggest things that a judge has to uphold is impartiality. And so, you know, if you can explain, I guess, how would you ensure that in your courtroom to ensure that you are going to uphold, you know, the conduct, official conduct, judicial conduct of impartiality? Considering, you know, Guam's a small community, right? We know, we know people, we have a lot of relatives. And, you know, how are you going to uphold impartiality in this small community?
Guam is a very small community. You know, before, you could go almost anywhere and know somebody, go on any plane trip before you know many of the people on the plane. And so we have friends and acquaintances almost everywhere you go. The canons of judicial ethics dictate how any conflict will be looked at. There's also case law from other jurisdictions as well as Guam that will show, here's the example of a proposed conflict and how it was settled at that time. And so, yes, I would say if I know somebody, you have to look at the relationship and see if it really comes all to the degree of being a conflict or not. And again, you would refer back to the rules.
Yeah, that's all my questions for you at this time. Thank you, thank you so much. I'd like to now acknowledge Senator Pito Turlohi, if he has any questions or comments.
John, congratulations.
Thank you, Senator. Thank you, sir.
Thank you so much, Senator Turlohi. Senator Duennius?
Sutus Masi, Madam Chair. John, I really appreciate you accepting the nomination. And I'm very grateful to the Governor for putting your nomination forward. I'm also grateful that you're sitting upright, because all of the words that have been shared today are normally upon a famous person's death. A eulogy to amount and recount accomplishments. But from my perspective, I look at it as you're just beginning a new chapter. I very rarely struggle to have questions, but today, I gotta say I'm completely stumped. And, you know, I look at this position that we have and we've been entrusted, after having gone through your packet, after having reviewed the committee's investigative work, and after having seen and heard from everyone today that our job is to vet nominees for the qualifications and certainly the character and the other characteristics that are presented to our committee. And I just have to say that I am satisfied, more than satisfied, with all that has been shared today. I guess I will just maybe do what Senator Perez did and maybe allow you one opportunity to expand a little bit more. I just wanted to know what your thought process was when you got that phone call, met with the Governor, and how you processed that and envisioned yourself, I'm going to take on this journey, and what kind of a judge am I going to be?
I would assume like in many occupations, you would start out, an example, like for law, you start out as a law clerk, you become an attorney, and then you say, well, where's my next step in growth? Whether it's owning a large firm, or a solo practice, or becoming a judicial officer. And I would guess that as a young attorney, that may have been on my mind. And over the years, I really enjoy practice. I love my practice. Like I said, there is difficulties, but it's enjoyable, it's very rewarding. And so when I got the call, it took a lot of thinking, a lot of thoughts, a lot of prayers to decide if this is something I really wanted to do, I guess. And again, I was humbled by the request by the Governor. Afterthought, after speaking with people and praying, it came to me that maybe this is another way that I can come and help the people of Guam. I'm not getting any younger and maybe this is my last career change. And hopefully I can help the people, help the courts move forward. And hopefully, I can help the people, help the courts move forward, help the people of Guam understand what the court is there for as well. And thank you.
That's what I was hoping to hear. I guess just in closing, once again, full disclosure, I consider you a friend of mine and an acquaintance that we've shared many conversations over the years. But I guess if I ever had any one regret at this point is that, I guess I can't say it's a regret. Your dad is seeing this from heaven now. Would have been nice if he were here during your nomination. But of course, the Lord has His plans, and I'm sure He's looking down from above, very proud of you. So also, I don't fully disclose all the time my positions, but having heard and fully vetted this position, I can tell you most assuredly, you have my vote in the affirmative for your nomination. This is Massey. Thanks, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Senator.
Thank you so much, Senator Duenias. Senator Tadegui.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and good afternoon to my colleagues, and most especially, good afternoon to everyone who's here today. Half a day, John.
Half a day.
I'm not gonna make it easy, you know. I'm pretty sure you're expecting that, but, you know, it's very impressive to have two former judges come before your nomination to testify and support. And I have to say, you know, Judge Sokola, former Judge Sokola, was my teacher in high school. You know, and when she said she doesn't give you a break, that's absolutely true. She does not give you a break, but she expects a whole lot from people. And, you know, that being said, I think her testimony today is, for you, is just impressive to me because I know what kind of person she is. And of course, you know, BJ being here as well too, very impressive. I'm just gonna ask you a few questions with regards to your current practice. You have some cases currently on hand. Some of the harder ones are probates. And probates sometime takes years, you know, to, even to get to court or get everything through. So do you have any cases that are probate? And what would happen if the event you became a judge? Do you have a smooth process for these clients? Or are you gonna have them seek another attorney and they have to start all over again? So what would happen then?
Many clients have called, and obviously, they're concerned. They say, "Oh, Mr. Turli, you heard that you might be appointed judge." And I have reassured them all that there'll be a smooth process that unfortunately, if I am confirmed, it's only when I'm sworn in that I will assist them in getting new legal counsel, someone that I feel that can work with them to move forward. And they don't have to start their cases. From the beginning, whoever their new counsel is will start where the cases end it now. If it's in the middle, they start from the middle. If it's near the end, which I think the majority of my probate cases are near the end, they'll just do the finishing touches on those cases.
So not only yourself, but your clients feel comfortable enough that, you know, they'll be transitioned with all the information and data that you've compiled in the last year or two years or however long they've been in probate?
Right, and there are a few that have been in for many years just due to not just the probate case itself, but extra civil cases that may be related to it. I have talked to many of them, and my clients seem to understand. I haven't had any real objection to our proposal, how to move forward. I don't foresee that.
It was brought to our attention that you are a board member of NAMBOs or on part of the board?
Yes.
Okay. As if you become a judge, will you have to step down on any of these like boards or commissions that you currently serve? I'm not talking about Rotary. Rotary is more of a, you know, social club.
Yes, for that board, I would have to resign from.
You would have to resign from all boards? Okay. Have you ever not shown up for a hearing with, that there was a case where you just did not show? Show up?
Not purposely. I think when we look ahead of the calendar, a week or so, and it's always on the calendar, and if it's on the calendar, I show. I never not show. There may be times where I may be delayed for whatever reason or in another courtroom, but I always show.
Okay. So can you describe, John, how you would characterize your judicial philosophy for me? Short, in a short frame. The short version.
What I think the role of the judiciary is really to assist the people of their issues. You know, I think the basics of law is what is right and what is wrong. Of course, there's the nuances of the law, the laws that the legislature passed. Sometimes it may not be as simple as what do I think is right, what I think is wrong. I think starting there is always a good place to start. And then you incorporate the laws that are being cited, saying, "This is why this case should go this way because this law states this, the facts state this." And there's case laws as well that you must follow as well. And putting everything together, and then you'll come up with a decision. But it's also to let the people understand what is the process that's gonna happen. Many people don't understand the process of the courts. So a lot of times, it's their first time there. They're terrified to be there. And I think putting people at ease, making them understand what the process is, an important aspect of the courts.
That's good. That actually kind of leads me into the next question that I have. Do judges have an obligation to improve the public understanding of the courts?
I don't know if there's an obligation, but I think it would be good for the judiciary. I know they are involved in a lot of programs, outreach programs with the Guam Bar Association, with the federal courts as well, not only offering programs for people to come and listen to and participate in, but also going out to the community and explaining certain parts of the law. An example, probates, explaining the basics of probates to people in this different villages or at different locations around Guam. I think there is an obligation for us to assist the public in that regard to the best we can.
Well, you and I have known each other for some time, you know, back in the days, in our younger days, without the gray hair. And you've always been so very respectful, and that's what, you know, Judge Sokola had said earlier. And then it's true to form, very respectful in every way. And I wish you the very best. Please know that I, you know, we wanna work together with the judicial branch as well as the legislative branch, especially the laws that we pass here. We do expect, you know, the courts to come and testify when it comes to certain legislation that you feel or feel that you can or cannot do. It's important to have that collaboration, especially, you know, between this body and your body as well to the judicial branch, I mean, moving forward. So I thank everyone again for being here today, and I think I've drilled you enough on this that I wish you the very best, and Merry Christmas to you and your family as well, and everyone else here. Merry Christmas.
Thank you, Senator. Merry Christmas.
Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Tadegui. So yes, I just want to thank you for accepting the call to service, and I will do my best to expedite the committee report to get it on to the upcoming session. But I just want to offer you one last opportunity. If you have any closing statements, you're welcome to do so at this time.
Again, I just want to thank all the senators that came today and the committee members as well, especially your staff. And again, most especially, thank you all to my family and friends who have come and helped support me today. Without them, I wouldn't even be able to move through any parts of my career. So I'm very thankful for all of that. Again, thank you.
Thank you so much, John, for your testimony and accepting the call to service. And so the committee will continue to receive testimony till eight o'clock today. And please address it to Senator Sabina Flores Perez, Acting Chairperson of the Committee on Health, Land, Justice, and Culture, or it can be emailed, or actually, please email it to office@senatorparas.org. So I just want to thank everyone for being here today. To be honest, I didn't expect as many of you out here because we didn't get much emails through, but it was great to see this outpouring, organic outpouring of support. And again, I think it's a testament that you are ready to serve in this capacity. And we do look forward that you will uphold the canons of judicial conduct and partiality to ensure that all the citizens of Guam are treated fairly and impartially. So thank you again, and there being no additional individuals testifying, this confirmation hearing for John C. Turli is duly heard. The Committee on Health, Land, Justice, and Culture will now adjourn. The time is now 2:41 PM. This is Massey.